Carries please stand for the same pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll have our annual budget hearing. Turn over to Allison and Dan.
Can you tell us all the money we got?
Stupid.
Six hundred and twenty dollars less than we got.
Do you want this? Does this move by two feet? Okay. Okay, thanks everyone. The, before we get into the budget presentation, I think one thing really important to talk about is the state budget, because the state budget did come in, the, what we were hoping didn't happen, and that is hoping for a three percent increase on our foundation aid, which would have meant about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase to the district. As it stood, if you remember, the increase from the executive budget, meaning the governor's budget, was twenty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. We were really hoping that the legislature would come through for us with a significant increase from that twenty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollar increase. Their increase was about a thousand dollars more. That's it. Even, even had they gone with a smaller percentage, you know, we're hoping to factor in our revenue budget, we were factoring in about a three hundred thousand dollar increase. Okay, a little over three hundred thousand dollar increase, three hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase. So, we're having to apply some additional reserves. We're going to make sure that on our expenditure budget, we're not spending, right, as much, but I gotta tell you, and I've said this, and I've had a couple parent group meetings since, we had some staff meetings already, and I said, we need to start now for next year. Because the talk out there is that next year's budget will look a lot the same, or be worse. They're actually looking at reading the formula. I don't know how that would be worse for us. Just two other things I want to point out about the state budget. One is this. I just want you to understand how you and I would probably say this, it's not right, it's not fair. For a number of years now, up until this year, there were districts who were considered to be fully funded with foundation aid. We weren't one of them. This was our first year being fully funded. Those districts that were fully funded in foundation aid were still getting a hold harmless, that's what they called it, of three percent as increase. Okay? This year was our first year fully funded. We're not getting a three percent increase next year. So that's one, that's one group, okay? There's also groups who within the executive budget were slated to lose hundreds of thousands, in some cases, millions of dollars, and have to go backwards because of whatever version the governor was using with the formula, okay? But the idea was that they were to go backwards. Those districts have all been made whole. So they went to zero. So if they were gonna have a four hundred thousand dollar increase, now they're even. If they were gonna have a million dollar decrease, now they're even. Did I say increase the one time? Excuse me. If they were gonna have a four hundred thousand dollar decrease, they're even. Million dollar decrease, they're even. When they sat down and did all of that, they decided that districts like ours, who were getting a minor increase, that that's almost all they were given, were considered to be, when it comes to the poverty levels of districts, were considered to be an average district. Okay? The third group, so those were two groups, the third group are the groups who are considered to be of high need. So in our area, there are districts who received two and a half percent increase, four percent, about a four percent increase. So I just, you know, I want everybody to hear that, there's nothing we can do about it. All I know is that we sat there, and some of you at this table, sat there at the legislative breakfast, and we heard, no, this, you know, we're not, this is not gonna happen. This, this is just the governor's budget. And you know what? For some people, that was true. For some people, that was just the government, governor's budget, and they ended up with a lot more than what the governor. For districts that were considered average needs and were already fully funded this year, they look a lot like us. Quite frankly, if we not had increased a small uptick in the number of students, we possibly would have gone backwards. Maybe we would have felt better then, because they would have just kept the seat. Sorry for the cynicism. Okay, but it's, you know, it's a real thing, and it affects us and affects our kids. So, point B, they are starting work allegedly on the foundation aid formula. The work is being done by the former head of the Division of Budget, who worked under the beginning of Governor Hochul and under Governor Cuomo. That's the person I'm understanding who's going to be leading up, looking at this. And so hopefully, we know well before the process next year, what that new formula is gonna look like. So at least we can predict what it is that we should be receiving in foundation. Any questions on that before we get through the presentation that most of you have seen, or questions, comments on that?
Yeah, that hold harmless. How did they come about just the, I mean, we were fully funded, right? So how did they?
So this year, we were fully funded.
How many other schools got that then?
Not this year, Bob.
Oh, I thought you said.
No, 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 no. The one thing, the way I say, so in prior years, there were a number of schools out there that, no, that were fully funded, and for all of those years that they were fully funded, they were still getting
Yeah, right.
percent increases on top of that. We finally get fully funded.
Yeah, right, okay, right, I get it.
Okay, good, good question. That was clear, good. Anything else on that? Okay, so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, early fall next year, we're gonna really start our process with pushing, you know, what we think we'll need as a district. So I talked about foundation aid, I don't think I need to say anymore about this. This was a slide that was in there before. The executive budget was five hundred and seven million. I will say this. They did, and you saw this in the news, they did provide more, significantly more than what the governor put forward. But that went to high need schools, and it went to filling the gap of schools that were gonna go backwards. That's where that money went. This here just shows the foundation, the foundation aid comparison. The bottom line is, all those years, that's what we were getting. The blue line is what we should have been getting. So again, this was the first year that we got what we were supposed to. And now we're gonna go backwards next year. School safety, school wellness. I hope when you talk to people, especially if you get a chance to talk to any of our representatives, that this is one of the things that you bring up. We really want them to come forward with money that is geared toward student safety and student wellness. Let districts choose how they want, but as all of you know, we've spent a lot of money in this area. We think it's the right thing to spend money on, but we haven't seen any additional funding for it. So our SROs and our SSOs, we value our costs, they're getting close to costing us almost a million dollars for all, all the security that we have here. That's money that we don't have to program. We need them to do something about that. They want us to do increased things to keep our kids safe. We need some funding to reflect that. And the other piece is the student wellness. We've increased a little bit our social worker, the social work in the district, the family support center we have running. We have a fifth concert at the high school that we, we took away another position to kind of make that happen, but we have five concerts. We think that's really important. But again, no funding for something that they're telling us we absolutely need to do and should be doing, and we agree with them, but we need the funding.
And this is just reviewing again the executive budget proposal, going across the, this is compared to our February aid runs. And when the legislature approves their budget, it's based on these February runs usually, so this comparison just shows the difference between what we would be paid had they used the runs versus what the executive budget proposal was. And you can see at the bottom, like it's, we were shorting about three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
So, so we were hoping for the seven hundred and fifty. We were banking on the three ninety, and we didn't get that, right?
Then, in the blue square there is our budget, our legislative approved budget versus prior year. So you can see at the bottom that the change in foundation aid is twenty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. That was the increase we got.
So I apologize, it wasn't less than a thousand dollars, it was a little bit over a thousand dollars, I'm sorry.
Then again, just going through the tax cap levy worksheet again, I won't go through the whole thing, but on the bottom there, highlighted in green is three point zero eight percent, which is our levy limit over prior year. Bringing the levy to thirty-seven million two hundred and ninety-nine thousand four hundred and five dollars, that's if you went to the levy limit. And here showing what the levy limit is and what the board actually approved. So the board approved a two point nine nine percent increase. For thirty-seven million two hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars.
And you can see off to the far right, off to the far right there, you can see that that's a eight-year average of about that four percent.
And then here's just going through the revenues again, how they're budgeted. On the left, there's the property tax number, the levy, thirty-seven million two hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars. And the other increases that were accounted for, some additional funds in Native American tuition that got bumped up a little, right, is our, at the bottom there is the use of reserves and appropriated fund balance to balance the budget. So you can see that the appropriated fund balance is at just over two point one million. We're utilizing capital transportation and technology reserve, and those are planned expenditures of bus purchases and instructional technology. ERS retirement and TRS retirement reserve dollars, workers' compensation tax surcharge, and employee benefits reserves to total the expenditure budget, which is eighty-seven million seventy-two thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And then if I take that expenditure budget and what we actually expect in revenues, again, looking at the actual revenues, we will be receiving, the difference would be just over four point nine million dollars. And of that four point nine million, and then we'd again be using two capital reserves, which are for those planned expenditures that I just described, the bus purchases and the instructional technology, leaving a balance to fund of just over three point nine million. And then again, looking again at the reserves that would be used to fund that balance, that two point nine million would be those reserves plus the appropriated fund balance.
Just, just maybe just jumping. Really important to know, and I also probably say it, but the numbers that you see in here, we don't expect to really dip into as much, right, so for this year. So in other words, those are ending balances, twenty-three, twenty-four year end balances expected. We're in a little bit better place this year, so we don't expect to spend all that down. So when we know we're applying more reserves to next year's budget than we have, we're feeling a little bit better right now about what we're gonna have come year end as far as some of these reserves. And we're gonna need, like, we're gonna need it for this year, and as I told you, I'm really worried about the year after. So we're gonna have to be very fiscally prudent when it comes to expenditures during the school year.
Yeah, and again, just to recap, the, the numbers highlighted in green there are the numbers that I'm anticipating if we were to use all of our reserves that were budgeted this year, which I do not expect to happen at all. So those balances will be a little bigger than what's shown here. The capital transportation reserve, that twenty-twenty-three reserve, so that was where that five hundred thousand dollars went, that assigned fund balance from last year, which brings that total to just over one point eight. And that's really the only reserve outside of the capital technology reserve on the bottom that we have yet to fill full. The rest of them, we cannot put any more money into them, so. And this is teacher retirement system again, just looking again at the percents, this is the percentage that the employer share is. The employer being Niagara Weefield School District pays on the teacher and administrative salaries, those people belonging to the teacher retirement system. So for next year, it's at ten point zero two percent, which is an increase from nine point seven six percent. And the ERS employee retirement system is for all other salaries. So that's, the employer share is going up to fifteen point two percent from thirteen point one percent. And then this is just a chart again showing the levy amount, and I've included next year in there at two point nine nine percent, so you can see that the eight-year average is, is one point nine four percent over prior year.
I know, you have this all the time, you know this work, anybody out there listening doesn't. In thirteen fourteen, we were the most fiscally stressed district in New York State. Now we're down near the bottom. There's been a lot of work that all of you have done, you know, the board's done, that the business office has done, to make sure that that happens. Again, we're feeling a little bit better about our numbers come the end of this year. However, next year's budget is gonna be, we're gonna keep it really tight, and, and what we get in next year's budget process from New York State is gonna be critical. Questions? Comments?
There have been any discussions about the electric bus issue? Is it still at twenty-seven, thirty, two thousand thirty-five?
As far as we know, there's been no change in that, great question. We, as a district, we're still waiting, we're in mind, okay, with OSIs to get our survey done, our study, and we've said that, we were told that because we have our own bus fleet, that they'll try to get us up to, you know, the front of that line before we can have any idea as to like what the cost would be before we can start even looking in to the kind of grants that we might need to turn it over. So if that whole process stays the way it is, and they don't move that back, we don't want to get caught behind, and at the same time, we don't want to jump that too fast. So having that information at our fingertips, especially if we can get funding for both the infrastructure and the buses, then we're more willing to jump, not fully, right? Because we already know some of the issues that they're having with some of these buses on the longer trips. So, good question.
I don't believe there's anyone sent in for residents' comments. A call for motion except the consensus agenda items as submitted? Anything to discuss? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post abstaining? Motion carries? Alright, I call for a motion to accept the personnel report as submitted. Anything to separate or discuss? If not, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post abstaining? Motion carries? Capital Project Committee?
I think Bob should turn on his mic and talk about Capital Project, at least the information we have right now.
Yes, we finally got some good news. The state came back and approved everything, and our X C Dollar went out for a bid, and we actually received it back, so the bids are back in. And hopefully, by the end of next month, a good chance we, something may start by then, but everything, we're on, we're on the right track now, we finally got the bids in and they came where we like them, so we're in pretty good shape right now.
So, just looking for time-wise then, are we looking for a start before the, by the end of May?
So here's what, here's what has to happen. So, the lowest bidders have been selected. They now have to, they do a de-scope, so they get a chance to look at that, talk about that, make sure they didn't miss anything with what they, with what their quote was. After that, maybe the end of this week, at the very beginning of next week, the general contractor will tell us when they believe they can get in. The next step after they do the de-scope, and we say, yep, these are, this is the group, is for the board to approve them. So that would happen at our next meeting on May twenty-second, right? So, May twenty-second, and then anytime after that, they could start. So we should have a feel within the next week or so. What we'll do is, once we kind of, once we have a feel for that, we will put something out to the public as to, you know, we've already worked on all this for a long time, right? Because we were hoping it would have been April first, but we'll lay the plan out with what the parking lot, all that stuff would look like. It's possible that they'll want to start right away. Also possible that they would say, you know what, we're gonna wait till everybody's out of school. In the end, the timeline that we proposed is what they need to be able to live by. So if they feel like they can start a little bit later, but still be done on time, so we'd be okay with that.
The reason I ask that question is simply because of the, you know, obviously our final concerts and everything like that, are we looking to possibly still be able to get our final concerts in on this?
So, what we've told the, the building administrators was this, once we have an idea of when the earliest potential start date is for, for them, they're gonna know too. And there, and if so, if there's an event that's taking place right now, scheduled to take place right now, at soon in Niagara, or ECC, then we will move it back here if we can. So we're, yeah, we're, we're all over, and we're just have to, we're in wait and see mode for sure. Yep.
All the time.
Yeah, when is the schedule time to come to?
So.
I know it's just.
No, great question. So initially, it was supposed to be early fall, so a year and, what's the date, a year and six months it was? Now it's about a year and eight months, because that's backed up a little bit, so we're probably talking about January, February of that year. So, we're still gonna be good for our concerts, you know, and our musicals, that are second half of the year. But it's somewhere around there now, so it's certainly moved back, because they were expecting to get in here around April first initially. Right, yeah.
Policy committee?
We met this evening at five o'clock to discuss several policies, and everything kind of went smoothly, so you will have them on the next agenda for the emergency.
Ex officious student members' report.
Alright, so this past week was a busy one for me. I was gone for the state skills USA competition. And that was one that was last Wednesday or Friday. I took home gold, which is awesome. And, so yeah, I don't know of anybody else who we feel took gold or medal. I have to check more into that, where the scores aren't out yet. But that was a, that was a good experience. Then we had our Eco Project and Wellness Day, which both events were incredible, even though the Wellness Day it rained, and, you know, the walk might have been a little crummy for people going out there, but the Eco Project was really great. We got a lot done, and I think everybody had a good time. Yeah, that's about it.
I heard the superintendent had a really bad splinter and wasn't able to really do much.
You stick up for me here?
He was doing, he was, he was leaving it.
Oh!
Okay, good for, you know what?
Wow!
He's a, he's a good man.
So supervisor.
Hold on, I'm sorry, what was that?
Oh, yeah.
We had the best, the best two.
Well, very good.
We got a, we got a bunch of organic, basically hub culture is just a bunch of organic material. And we got sticks, and then layered with some grass really tightly packed in there, and dirt on top, then we threw some oat seeds on top, that'll help kind of all root it together. Yeah, that was a.
Yeah, you can see some of the, some of the pictures that are up there, maybe, maybe if you just want to even click through them, if you could. So, really quick, we, we had about, you know, not everybody shows up at the same time, so we actually always take a picture before. We always take a picture before and after. So, we had approximately sixty people on the floor, which I just thought was awesome. For a day that a lot of people rolled out of bed and saw a percent chance of precipitation, and everybody still showed. It was awesome. It really didn't rain much. What, what you can see here, you know, our staff members were helping out with some of that heavy dirt, moving that to the hub culture, termal culture areas, the grass there was being raked, that was actually stuffed inside the, the logs, and then the dirt piled on top of that. If you go to the next one, you can see our friends from Rotary, the Rotary Club of Niagara is, has been a partner with us since we started this, this is our annual, they're just awesome partners in this. It actually, the Greenway presentation that took place at the Rotary meeting is actually what kicked this off, you know, ten Eco Campus sessions ago. The, the students that were there, this wasn't just the normal work. This wasn't just grab a bag and go pick up some garbage. This was some pretty heavy work. The logs that you can see that were pulled, all of those were cut off from some of the dead ash trees along the creek. We left those ash trees about eight feet high, so that they're still good for the environment, they decompose, they're good for, you know, animals, insects, all of that. They cut off the rest of that, were, were pulled out. I did want to give credit a little bit, maybe one of the other pictures, if you could go ahead. That'll be in a minute. Oh, there he is, top left-hand corner. You probably don't recognize him with that red, that orange hat on, and holding a chainsaw, that's our director of facilities. He came in, we were here early that morning, cutting up some, some of those trees and those logs, putting them into manageable sizes that the kids could then, could then lift and pull out of there. And then you can see some of the finished burns that were built. This year, those are only gonna be growing, oh, it's an annual. In future years, geraniums will be planted, those geraniums are gonna be geraniums that will bring in insects and birds that are native to the area, so they're, you know, it's really good for the riparian zone, I don't say that word, which is a really important area along Kewa Creek. So, pretty, it was really a great day. Oh, another one I'll point out too, is right there. Miss Mullin Middle School has, I think, been at every single one I, I, of one of these events, now that we've had ten. So, so many staff members. Your own school business official was there, Mr. Stack was there, and there was just, and, and I gotta give props for this event to Mr. Kramer, Mr. Kramer at the high school really is the one with the knowledge. I use a few of his words. He really knows what he's doing with this stuff, thank goodness. But he's been just so important to this whole process. So it's been, it's been a really great project, and we're gonna continue it. We're, we're still very hopeful, and as we talk about some different funding sources of building the bridge that we want, the, the educational node, that'll look like a boardwalk area, so ki- kids can get down there and take samples and not disturb the environmental area around the creek, so we're certainly looking forward to that. The next few pictures, we, we, along, right afterwards, so this was the Eco Campus was from eight to eleven. We then had the Wellness Fair and the Wellness Walk. We had twenty-one vendors and four or five different organizations all present there. Families could come through, they could talk to all of these local organizations. So that was awesome, great, we had a lot of people coming through. Again, even with the weather. We also had that day our our walk, that, we've had a wellness walk for three years in a row now, that wellness walk raised over six thousand dollars, I think we had the exact dollar amount. If, if you go to the last slide, there were, where is it? Hundred and forty-eight registered walkers, sixty-one hundred dollars, even in those conditions. And it was, it wasn't raining for the Eco Campus project, it was raining for the walk. And they still showed up, they were still here, they still went through that walk, really important for suicide prevention, so. And then the last thing, and I think it said, if you go back to that slide, the last thing was the Falcon Food Mart. People come in, they could shop, if they needed anything, there were hygiene products, foodstuffs, all those things there. And I'll tell you, the Wellness Fair, like, moved into this week, at one of our schools, we actually had our first mobile food mart, where we took some of the foodstuffs to the, to one of our schools to see how that would work, and everything that we brought over there was taken within about fifteen minutes of us doing it, which is awesome. You know, it tells you there is a need. Thank, you know, thank you to the different partners that we have that are providing us with all of this for our community, it's really awesome. That's my report on that. Couple other things. Hiring, we are in the middle of two of our hiring season. There's not near as many certified teacher positions that we're hiring for this year, but there's still some. We have actually two new bus drivers in training, so that, great that that continues to grow, we just don't, don't say retire. We have actually two new bus drivers in training, so that, great that that continues to grow, we just don't, don't decide to retire. The auditorium Bob talked about, which is excellent. We do have to decide on the scope of work for the internal audit, so maybe after the meeting.
Jason.
J- it's Jason's, maybe we can talk, and that, that, maybe we can finalize that to get that back to the committee, you might wanna reach out to Jason first and. Um, we, we got some information that came back, I know, to Deanna about what they were recommending, okay? We need to pick the Board of Education walkthrough, I know it was tough to find a consistent date on that, we're more than, you know, two people can come. So if you want, I can throw out a few more dates.
Yeah, why don't you do that?
And then maybe the early June?
Yeah.
I'll do that, okay? Last two things, we um had a. Visit from the Native American unit from the New York State Education Department, they've met with. District um representatives and representatives from the Tusker Nation, that was yesterday. Um, it was their first time coming out for about seven years, so it was good to have them here. And at the um. Eco Campus Project, we actually had a representative from the governor's office, it's the governor's regional representative, um, and. She was here with uh one of the other people who works in her office, who's actually, um. She has two students who are in the district, so it was kinda neat that they were here, they took part in, in that day event and got to see some of the things that. We're doing here in our district.
Any questions, the superintendent has your report? Alright then, um, any items for board discussion? Evil business? Any new business? Um, had a question from a parent for lacrosse, uh, when it comes to uh equipment for modified. There is, I guess, a new, um, there's new gear that athletes are supposed to have for chest protector. Um, and I guess that a lot of our modified. Equipment is, the parents are at buying, have to invite on their own. Um, we could just check into that piece, please. Anything else in this? Public comments, open mic night? Karaoke, so. So yes, yeah, alright, um, if not, I'll call for a motion to.